Good evening and welcome to December 1st, 2020 Board of Education meeting. May I call the meeting to order? At this time, Ms. Juan Craft will lead us in our introduction.
Thank you. So I'm reading from "Life is Better at the Beach: Inspiration for Living Each Day Like You're at the Beach." "Just breathe," you may tell yourself when your heart rate accelerates. The stresses of your day, the pressures from your job, or the demands of your family can sometimes feel overwhelming. In times of anxiety, it is helpful to breathe deeply, just like you might do in the mornings at the beach, with your coffee in hand and a light blanket on your lap. Just breathe. Breathe in God's peace, the peace that passes all understanding and settles your heart and mind. Remember God's promises to be faithful to you and never to leave or forsake you. Remind yourself of God's loving and gentle presence. Then breathe out any worries running through your mind. Let go of the argument you had last night. Release the stress about money. Put away thoughts of not being good enough, smart enough, or strong enough. Let God replace your anxiety with His peace. You can breathe inside or outside, at your desk, in your home, or in your car, for one minute, or 10 minutes, or an hour. You can breathe in God's peace and breathe out your anxiety because our God, the Peacemaker and Helper, is near. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Everyone would stand for the President. A pledge of allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have the privilege of swearing in our board members, Ms. Juan Craft and Ms. Kelly Williams Peters. And Mr. Ray Batutso, our current County Clerk of Superior Court, will be the swearing in.
I'd like to thank the Board for inviting me out to administer the oath of office.
Is your mic on? The mic?
I'm sorry, Ray. Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the School Board for inviting me out to administer the oath of office. It's truly an honor, and I want to congratulate the re-elected and newly-elected School Board members.
Thank you.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you, Dwan Craft, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I will.
And do you further solemnly swear that you will well and truly perform the duties of the Office of Board of Education member for Curritect County Schools for Curritect County, North Carolina, to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations. If you'd like to introduce your family, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you. This is my husband, Billy Peters, and my daughter, Carly Peters.
Okay, and you're going to have your daughter hold the Bible for you? All right. All righty, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you, Kelly Williams Peters, solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Kelly Williams Peters, solemnly swear that you will well and truly perform the duties of the Office of Board of Education member for Curritect County Schools in Curritect County, North Carolina, to the best of your knowledge, skill, and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Get to work.
Thank you, Ray. We really appreciate you taking the time to swear in the-
Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you.
The new members. Have a good night. All right. Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Matt Lutz.
Well, thank you. And Kelly, congratulations. Dwan, congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a good period of time here. All right. So it is time to nominate, make a nomination for a Board Chairman. So do I have a nomination for Chairman of the Board?
Dr. Lutz, I'd like to nominate a person who has led us through some very difficult times here recently and can provide the continuity and consistency that our Board needs, and that is Karen Etheridge.
Second from Janet. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I now turn the meeting back to you, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate the support, and we have been through quite a year. Very difficult times, but I see that we're coming out of the COVID crisis hopefully after the first of the year with the vaccine. At this time, I need to open the floor up for our Vice Chairman position. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Dwan Craft, our present Vice Chairman, so that we have the same, you know, Chairman and Vice Chairman.
I second that nomination. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Craft, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. At this time, we have public comment session. Ms. Jones, did anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion that we approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
On the last approval of the agenda, I voted yes to that, what Dr. Dodgme made the motion.
Okay.
Dr. Dodgme had made a motion that the agenda be approved, and I voted yes to that. It says on the minutes that I voted no.
Okay.
I think maybe Mr. Kradick voted no.
All right. Mine don't say that.
Yeah, mine says-
Mine says that you voted yes.
Oh, okay. This is the one that was printed-
This correction was made. Okay, correction was made.
Okay. All right. We have a correction that was made on the minutes that we have. Janet has a-
Eleven ten.
Yes, an old minutes. So we need to have approval for the agenda with the corrected vote that you voted yes. That's what you wanted to make sure of, right?
I voted yes. Did someone vote no?
Yes.
Mr. Kradick voted no.
Yes, Mr. Kradick was the only one that voted no for that.
And mine says that he voted yes.
Okay. All right. We'll tear that one up. All right. So do I have a motion? We have a motion to approve? We have a second? And that was our discussion. So any other discussion that we have to have? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, on our items, Item F, and that's Larissa York, our Finance Officer. She's going to tell us about our budget amendments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, I'm going to present to you Budget Amendment Number Two, and I'm going to walk you through it. We had Budget Amendment Number One at our previous meeting, but there's, this is a new format, so I just want to make sure that you're all able to follow it and that you like it, and if you like it, we will continue to do it. So in your board packets, you'll find Budget Amendment Number Two. The total appropriation of the current budget is $47,452.481 and 71 cents. The increase for this budget amendment is $1,570,531.83, which brings our total appropriation in this current amended budget to $49,023,13.54. That's the first page. If you turn the page, so this new format has a page that shows you the increases and the decreases, and all of the movement in expenses and revenues for each fund. So for instance, the first page is the State Public School Fund. So in the first block of information, you'll have your expenses. And here's where you see the money either going in or coming out of the purpose codes. And the purpose codes are what you're actually voting on. So I want to make that clear to you, and you can see where the money is going and coming from in each of the funds. The second page is the Local Current Expense Fund. Third page is the Federal Grants Fund. Fourth page is the Capital Outlay Fund. Fifth page is the Other Local Revenue Fund. So there are all your funds, and those are, the first block of expenses are all of your purpose codes that you're actually voting on. As my, for my attempt to explain where the money is actually coming from, or where we're receiving it, or where we're giving it back or expending it, there's another block under the expenses. It's called Revenues. And the revenues are where you see every bucket of money, or PRC, that we get, whether it be from the state, or from other federal grants, or from other local incomes. So there you can see, if it's an increase, we're getting the money. If it's a decrease, we had to give it back, or we had to expend it somewhere. And then in the next block under that is your explanation of, that's me trying to tell you, well, this is where the money came from. So let's look at the State Public School Fund page, the first page, State Public School Fund, explanation. That's the explanation of revenues, and I'm telling you that these changes that took place are to record additional allotments and adjustments for state PRCs due to charter school reductions. Everything you see in the decrease, they took away from us because of charter schools. CARES Act allotments, if you look at PRC 137, which is the last one in the revenues box, that's the Cybersecurity CARES Act money that we got. Subpay, for instance, in PRC 003, we get some subpay, the substitute pay. CTE credentials, those came in in '14. They pay us, since our students take tests to, say, for instance, for Microsoft Word, or whatever testing that they need. The state does give us some money for those tests. And then other PRC-specific allotments. So all of those allotments, if we go back to the first page, and you see where, I'm telling you that we had an amount, an increase of 1.5 million. That doesn't mean that somebody just gave us some money that we can spend wherever. Every allotment, every PRC has rules, all these rules. So we just can't spend classroom teacher money to go out and buy computers, you know? So that's what I'm trying to convey with this new format. So, okay, so we went over the State Public School Fund. We didn't get any money in the Local Current Expense Fund, but I had to move some around because sometimes, you know, we need to buy this, and the money's over here, and we didn't need it over here. So I'll do a budget transfer and I'll move it. Federal Grants Funds, all of these new revenues are because we got the budgets approved. Doesn't really mean that we have the money, but the budget's approved, so we'll get the money. So that, I wanted to show you that we got Title I approved. We didn't get the money yet, but we're approved, so that's a big deal. It's a really big deal.
Yeah.
PRC 60 is approved. PRC 103, which is Title II, that's approved. 108, Education Technology is approved. And 119, we got a little bit of money for targeted assistance for our preschool kids. We might get more, but if we do, I'll let you know. And Capital Outlay Fund, all I did was move a little bit of money. Other Local Revenue Fund is Fund Eight. We got some revenue due to some Medicaid deposit, fee-for-service deposits. Our EC Director got us some out-of-district reimbursement money in, which is amazing. It's great help. We got some reading recovery revenue from Beaufort County. They paid us for one of our teachers who helped them with their reading recovery program. And then we got some student Chromebook insurance payments. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, in the Local Current Expense Fund, $112,000 was moved from Policy Leadership and Public Relations. Now, do you talk with Dr. Lutz about, you know, those moves before you move them, or?
Yes. So, yeah, so anything that's being moved is either requested by a director, or somebody at a school, a principal, or if we're hiring somebody and we need to move the money. Like, I had the money in his old salary line that we weren't using anymore.
Right.
So we had to move to other payroll lines.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you like the format?
Very nice.
I do. I like, yes. I like how everyone's itemized.
Is user-friendly? So you want me to stick with it?
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York.
Thank you, Larissa. We want to make sure we put this on the regular agenda and walk through, so we're trying to, this is our, to be absolutely as transparent as possible with our revenue and how we're spending our dollars.
Thank you again. All right, well, we need action on this item. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The budget amendments are approved. All right, letter G, accreditation update. As you know, accreditation has been a top subject, you know, for a while now, and we've been talking about it for many, many years. And so at this time, Ms. Dowdy is going to give us an update. And Dr. Lutz.
Good evening. You have a flyer in your packet of papers. We're going to try to show it up there. It's a little bit small, so I apologize for the size if you have older eyes like the most of us do. This little flyer just kind of outlines the accreditation process, looking at some options that we have to move forward with accreditation. So in the second box, you'll see a district accreditation via Cognia. We've had some discussion about contracting with Cognia, formerly known as Advanced Ed, to pursue district accreditation. So inside that box, it just speaks to the process in looking at Cognia's processes. Three phases, starting with an applicant, moving to a candidate, and then hopefully eventually to accredited status. The little fine print up there, again, hard to read, does say that it does take approximately two years to complete that process through Cognia, or again, Advanced Ed. North Carolina in 2012 initiated a process through the State Board of Education and the General Assembly to also accreditate high schools in North Carolina. You will note that this is the process that JP NAP Early College used to earn their accreditation. And so in this, it's only available to high schools. So a difference between that first or the second box and this third box is the state accreditation process only accredits high schools. Cognia will look at districts or individual schools to accredit. Process is very much similar in that you submit a request, you then have to complete some paperwork on their behalf, including a self-assessment and some other important documentation, and then all that data is submitted to the state for a team to review. That team reviews and decides whether or not they need to complete a site visit as part of that process as well. That process, however, is within a year's timeframe, not longer than a year, if all goes as planned. So on the backside of that flyer, and if I switch over on this screen to the next side, it's just to look at where we currently stand and what our needs are right now to address. In either process, whether we choose to go and look at the district accreditation process or we choose to look at the high school only at this point in time, we have to have strategic planning in place. Both of those ask if your school's strategic plan or school improvement plan aligns with your district's strategic plan. So one of the first things that we know we've identified as what we need to work on is looking at our district strategic plan. Unfortunately, it has been untouched for a number of years, and so it is something that Dr. Lutz and I have both looked to address, and he'll speak a little bit more to later on, I think, in the board meeting itself. Our schools do need to revisit their school improvement plans and update self-assessments. You note that most school improvement plans are on a five-year cycle. The state, with COVID going on, granted every school the opportunity to roll over their school improvement plans because they knew that we all had enough to deal with versus looking at that as a separate standalone entity. We do currently have an interim high school principal in place, which I do believe plays a large role in moving forward with high school accreditation. And then, of course, COVID-19 has most certainly disrupted much of the educational system as we once knew it. So that being said, we kind of looked at proposing a timeline moving forward. We're here meeting today to discuss accreditation, and then between now and January, determining whether we want to move forward with district accreditation and that process, or look specifically at identifying the high school as our next level of accreditation, and then moving on from there to see if we wanted to certify our middle schools and our elementary schools. This spring really worked to look at laying the groundwork for redoing our district strategic plan, and thus our school improvement plans, to make sure that we're all aligned. And that work, if you see beneath there, the bullets that take place underneath there, is going to involve not just us. I mean, if we're really going to do this right, and we're really going to do this well, this is a community effort. And so we'll engage stakeholders like Mr. Stike Leather and members of the county commissioners, our community business organizations, everybody who has a vested interest, parents, students, business owners in our area, everybody who has a vested interest in making sure that our students get what they deserve, and that we produce a product that we're all proud of to come back and hopefully serve in our community. So that being said, we do have plans to advertise and hire for the high school principal, spend summer collecting all the data that is required. The state accreditation process has a few less bullets of required paperwork than does the district accreditation. Obviously, we're focusing on one school versus 10 schools, or nine schools, because the Early College already has accreditation. But if we're going to go through Cognia, we would encompass all 10 schools through that process and lump them in with us. So, you know, that's going to take some time to collect all that data. Strategic planning's not something you do overnight. I mean, that work to involve all your community stakeholders is going to take some time. So looking for the fall of 2021 to actually submit the formal request for accreditation, and to, that gives a high school principal, who's going to play a key role in this, the opportunity to be on board and be vested in this process as well. Once we do that process and get accreditation for CCHS, then we could look to initiate the processes for district accreditation if the board so chooses to do.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Dr. Lutz?
I think Renee captured that quite well. We're going to bring this forward to the Board in January for Board action in terms of either deciding to move forward with the high school or the district. If we choose the district, if we choose the high school, initially, we're certainly going to move forward with the district in the future. It's not one or the other. It'll just be one at a time. And so we'll have further discussion with this in January, and I look forward to working with the Board and our community in creating a strategic plan that meets the needs of our community.
Sounds good. Sure.
The difference in cost for the Cognia versus the state?
Cognia is a recurring cost, about $13,000 a year, plus a little bit more on the initial accreditation every year.
Wow.
And the state one will be under $10,000 total, and it's a one-time fee.
Do you have to continue to approve what you're doing every year? Do you have to submit forms and, for the state one, revisit that kind of thing?
So in both processes, it's treated like a living document, much like school improvement plans and strategic plans are supposed to be. And so you will have renewal cycles for those in which you will make sure that your information is updated, added to, you know, improved for any new programs you've added, those types of things. So there will be that. It doesn't speak to cost in either of the scenarios with that renewal cycle. Will we recur that initial 13, plus the additional fee for that renewal cycle year? Whereas the state, when nothing on, is any indication in there is that there's an additional fee after you pay that accreditation fee.
When NAP got accredited-
Through state.
Right, through the state. You know, we didn't get everybody on board, so to speak. We didn't revise the district plan. It's my understanding, NAP already had pretty much accomplished everything they needed to accomplish before they submitted the application.
That's correct. We have some work to do, and we were ready to move forward, and then when we peeled it back and really took a deep dive into what we needed to get done, we need to accomplish these other pieces before we can submit an application.
And absolutely have to get our faculty and staff on board.
It's imperative.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the update, and I think we're all for moving forward to make sure that all of our schools are accredited. Dr. Lutz, would you like to give us an update for our third and fourth quarter?
Okay. As we were preparing for today's meeting, this originally had read "A High School Update", and then we had to revisit that verbiage, and I wanted to start off, and then I'll talk about the high school. But we do need to make a recommendation here to continue with Plan A for elementary schools for the second semester, Plan B for the middle schools for second semester. So we'll come to that when I conclude here. For the high school, what we're looking at for a return for high school, and we promised an update for this meeting, is to reconvene our Board on the 7th of January for a discussion to bring the high schools back. My intention is to have an all-call, go home to high school parents and high school students next week, asking them to register if they would choose to go online, much like I sent a call out yesterday for elementary and the middle schools, because we are planning ahead for those. I did not want to jump too far ahead and make that call for the high schools. I wanted to keep that separate. And so with the intention that we can bring our high schoolers back in some way, shape, or form. That meeting on the 7th, if the Board would approve, we would look at a soft start, similar to what we did with the elementary and middle school divisions, with getting our high schoolers back sometime in mid to late January. That would be our intention and goal. As you know, dealing with the COVID-19 crisis, that we can, it's a moving target. So far, we continue to forge ahead. I'm proud of our staff and our students and our community. I'm glad that our kids are still in the buildings. And so if things continue to remain relatively the same, I, my belief is that we'll be able to get our high school students back in some way, shape, or form. We're working closely with transportation on that as well.
But that would only be B. You still are limited to B.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Craft. Only under Plan B. We are, under the current rules set forth by the Governor, a reminder, K5 can go back under A, which is all students with limited protocols in place in the classroom. High schools and middle schools can only operate under Plan B, which is only 50% capacity in the building at any time, which is difficult when it comes especially to the busing piece, where our middle schools right now, we can only put 24 students on a bus.
Yeah, the transportation is a big item that we'd have to discuss, you know, with the social distancing and putting our buses on the road. So we'll plan to discuss that on the 7th of January and see what we can do.
We've put together a couple of different scenarios with what that's going to look like, but I want- like, but I want to bring hard numbers so that if there, we do believe there would be increased costs with some double runs and bus drivers and the sheer numbers of buses, but I want to bring very accurate information to you. But if our public answers those questions and gives us good information, that really helps in our planning purposes. So if a high school student doesn't need transportation and wishes to return to school, that helps us a great deal.
So that would be on the survey of how many high school students would be driving or having transportation, and that would reflect on?
Yes.
What we need to do? Okay.
I think we need to be sure that we give parents plenty of time to decide. I did hear from a couple of folks who got an all-call, they're sleeping, only having to decide each of the sides, just a few days. So maybe they want to think about it a little more, I don't know.
We can change when that survey closes.
Okay.
At the same time, we have to have a close date so that we can gather our information. It's kind of a catch-22, so on both.
When we do the high school, and if you look at a soft opening, so to speak, one group at a time, kind of like we did elementary, can we look at maybe freshmen and seniors? I know freshmen have never been there, and seniors, I mean, this is their big year.
Absolutely. I was the same line of thinking, freshmen and seniors, and not that we have forgot our sophomores and our juniors, but seniors, it's the last time that they will be in high school, and our freshmen have yet to be step-foot in high school, unless they're playing sports.
Right.
And just to clarify, the on-call, the surveys that are out there right now, that is for elementary?
Yes.
And middle.
I did two separate calls, one for elementary and one for middle school.
You only have to fill them out, one, if your child, if your student's going to be virtual, and if they're going to ride the bus.
Correct. Only virtual, and only if they require transportation.
Okay, right, yeah. I have talked to parents, other parents, and they were, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, get it out in public to make sure that it's just only if you're going to do those two things.
Only.
That's correct. Those forms are the exact same forms we initiated first semester. So parents who are electing to keep kids virtual only have to complete the virtual registration. So those are the families that know, no matter what happens with COVID, it's in their best interest as a family for their students to remain virtual. The bus registration forms are only for those families who are electing for their students to return in person, who need transportation in order to get to and from school. So those are the two forms that are out there for pre-K5 and middle school that need to be completed as soon as possible as we head into the second semester. Those same forms will be duplicated for the high school when we release those after Dr. Lutz sends his all-call message, exact same things. Those students who are requesting to stay completely virtual for the spring semester, and then those who are returning to in-person who will require the use of school transportation to get to and from school.
Thank you.
How has the drop-off got to be like at Shawboro and Moyoc? I know they were large schools, and I heard there was a lot of traffic back up.
They've done a great job of whittling that down. We had great support from our sheriff's department as well, and they have figured out how to get those kids in that building pretty quickly now. We had over 200 cars at Shawboro.
Wow.
Yeah, as a mom who drops off at Shawboro every morning, it started out quite interestingly, almost back to the Shawboro Fire Station, the Crawford Fire Station, to get rolling. But we've worked really well with Jeff Walker and the deputy sheriff's department to kind of put some things in place to help us out. And again, it's just a thoroughfare for traffic heading to Elizabeth City, also get stuck in that same traffic as they're heading to work, so, but it has worked itself out well. And I can say, as somebody who's started from the start date to now, it is much quicker, much more efficient, and those staff members up there do a fabulous job getting everybody through the lines. Middle school, much easier, we're split into two cohorts, less traffic. It has not been the problem we anticipated at either middle school, to be perfectly honest.
Good, good.
Dr. Lutz, could you give us a quick update on the high school end-of-course testing and CTE testing?
That's later on in the agenda under testing, Mark.
Letter K.
They do do whatever we, they have, they're wonderful with helping us, and I know we've got winter coming. Have you touched base with them? It seems like some years we have miscommunication there. We expect them to notify us if it's foggy because they're out patrolling all the time?
So I've had that conversation with Matt Mullins, and he has a system in place, part of that, and so we'll get those calls out. Again, some of the, and we know the challenges in our county with the length and in the space, is you'll get fog in one spot that is so dense, and the rest of the county is fine. And so we're trying to make it, those are tough calls, but we have spotters out all over the county.
Same with the snap.
Yes. Don't say that. Although I think we've got that online learning thing.
Yeah, we've got that down. Okay. I need a motion to approve for our Plan A for our elementary kids and Plan B for our middle school children. Do I have a motion to approve?
For the second semester.
For the second semester.
Yes, I'll make that motion to.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries?
And we will act on the high school later?
Yes. We'll have a meeting on January 7th with the sole purpose of discussing the high school. We'll have a regular board meeting on January 21st with a typical agenda, but on the 7th, that'll give us that time to get our kids back if things continue to progress and things are looking fairly good.
The Evergreen Report. Dr. Lutz has been working hard on a lot of the questions and things that they brought to our attention, as well as the county commissioners. He has answered those questions a very thorough manner, and he'll bring us an update at this time.
Next Monday on December 7th, I will be presenting to the Board of Commissioners an update on the Evergreen Report, also an update on central office and COVID savings. And I wanted to make, go over the report with our board prior to that, so we'll just, we'll walk through. I'm going to highlight certain areas with our Board of Commissioners, and, but I'm going to give them the report as you see it, so we'll just, we'll walk through this rather quickly. I'm going to highlight the areas that I'm going to touch base with our Board of Commissioners. We continue to work on identifying students for free and reduced lunch. I will say that this year, we are struggling in identification, as is the entire state and nation, because the federal government gave a waiver and allows free breakfast and lunch for all. So there is not the incentive to fill out the forms. We are working on that, it is online, and people are going to be able to fill that out. So we're going to continue to make a push, but I would expect that we get some, waiver's going to be a big word with school systems for the next six months or so. I do anticipate some relief from the federal government in terms of some of these requirements. The fund balance is sufficient to cover three months of operating expenditures, adopt balanced budgets with some surplus, and replenish the fund balance. Well, as, and I'm going to touch on this later with COVID savings, I am happy to report that we did not touch our fund balance last year for the first time in a number of years, and we are able to actually add money back into the fund balance due to some savings from COVID.
Do we have three months of operating expense?
Not yet.
That's our goal.
That is our goal. Two, three, modify the law in which ADM, in which inflationary rates are established in the county funding formula. That had been done, and we will be revisiting that formula again after a two-year agreement this coming spring. Identify capital needs and ensure the capital expenditures are not being made with general operating funds. We've implemented this, we've put checks and balances in place to ensure that money is being spent properly, using the right codes, and honoring the processes that we have put in place. Revisit campus-level allocation formulas used in prior years. This is how much money schools get per student. We have implemented this. Campus-level allocation formulas now include uniform-based amounts plus additional allocations per school ADM. So it's not just one size fits all. We have not implemented the cost for athletic trips and school program code. We continue to use travel tracker, but we have not implemented that, as we did not see that as potential cost savings. Hire a designated part-time courier to deliver mail and pick up and make bank deposits. Town Bank does send a courier free of charge for us for bank deposits daily as needed, and we continue to look whether or not we need a full-time courier. Discontinue the practice of having finance staff enter the unrequistitions, we've done that one. Discontinue the practice of mailing purchase orders back to the requister, we have also implemented that change. Begin paying invoices and issuing campus checks on scheduled weekly basis, that has also been implemented. We now write checks weekly.
One day a week?
Yep, on Fridays, correct, Lars? Yes. Replace the current system of paying supplements based on percentage of current salary with the system where supplements are expressed in terms of hard dollars. That was a decision the board came to, I believe in June of 2019. This has been implemented, and what it's allowed us to do was really do a much better job of projecting our budget costs and allowed us to make predictions and really structure those budgets in a much easier way. Prior to making this change, if the state gave a 2% raise, it affected our supplements. That no longer is the case. And so this has been, this has been a good thing for our district in terms of keeping our cost in order.
We had to do that.
Yes.
Financially speaking.
Yes, yes, we did. The recommendation was made to phase out the use of dual employees in eastern North Carolina and Carrattuck. Phasing out dual employees is problematic. We need our bus drivers and our custodians, and sometimes our food service and other support personnel to serve in dual roles. They are not, I think some of this can, if you were in, let's say, a unionized state and you had employees in dual roles, you would be paying out exorbitant costs and overtime and different pieces. We do a nice job of keeping our finances under control with our dual employees, and we depend on them to help us function as a district, and we appreciate their work. Conduct a physical inventory of equipment at the end of each fiscal year, that is in process. Our tech department does this, our finance department helps with that, and CTE is also required to tag in inventory all equipment purchased with Perkins Funds. Work with new workman's compensation procedure to establish a more robust risk management system. This has been implemented. I can tell you that we continue to make this a priority to keep our workman's cost, workman car's cost down. We've got a reassess insurance coverage on a five-year rotating, we've implemented this. Our next reassessment is scheduled to occur in the spring of 2022. Recommendation three, one, is reduce the span of control of the superintendent, and I just put a note there, can see below. On the original report, Mr. Stefanik actually had pretty much the vast majority of his cabinet and principals all reporting directly to him, so the recommendation was, you know, we need to disperse some of that. That had been done previously. I'm going to take us down to three, two, and that recommendation was reclassify the assistant superintendent position as directors. We are, we will not be refilling my previous position as assistant superintendent as an assistant superintendent, and I'm going to bring that chart up later. We do need to support, our core business is teaching and learning, and we need to support that work, so we do need a director of curriculum, but we do not need a second assistant superintendent. I thought about trying to weave in the old George Bush, no new taxes, we will not have another assistant superintendent. I'm not going back like he did. All right. And so that's going to be the suggestion. Out of three, three, is allow a 2.5 assistant principals, create a best-practice staffing formula, and include this formula in district staffing plan. I put on this one, it's implemented and in process. We did reduce an assistant principal at the high school level. That was a position that was reassigned, so there was no necessarily cost savings, that position was reassigned, but I do not intend to refill that assistant position at the high school. I have, I had our, Jalen Miller, our exceptional children's director, and Ann Mack, our HR coordinator, pull some numbers for me. I wanted to share this with our board so that we understand, the days of a principal kind of hanging out in the office, and the assistant principal picking up bus discipline and just doing maybe some lunch duty and some different pieces, those days have passed. And I just want to share some numbers so we understand the function of administration in the buildings and how important that is in terms of staffing. And I will keep an eye on that in terms of the ratio. We take, I'm going to do one of our smaller elementary schools. So at Griggs Elementary, they have a minimum of 96 evaluations to conduct. So that is equivalent of at least 40 minutes to an hour for each one, and I'm not counting in the post-observation conference and their pre-observation conference with a, like a non-veteran teacher, that type of thing. So I just went with some minimums. At the same time, they're estimated to have a minimum of 42 IEP meetings, and that is federal law, that administrator must be in those meetings. We can, if an administrator leaves a meeting, you actually have to stop the meeting. And so just at Griggs Elementary alone, that is 140 meetings, and right now, we have about 175 days in the school year. And I'm going to point out, so the assistant principals play a vital role in supporting the functions of the building. That's on top of bus duty, monitoring, discipline, and spending time working with your teachers around curriculum and instruction.
And testing.
And testing.
Well, the administrative position for Griggs and Jarvisburg was not called an assistant principal.
That's correct. It's still a support, it's a support person, but it can be viewed as such. So, and the other position that has received some scrutiny was the assistant principal at JP Napp. Well, JP Napp functions so differently than a typical school with college and visits and different pieces, and she also serves as an instructional leader as well. And so in terms of staffing, with the elimination of one assistant principal at the high school, I've been questioned, are you sure? And I've said absolutely because I put this down in numbers. Our largest elementary school has a comparable number of meetings to attend, whether in evaluations or IEPs, as the high school does. So they're all fairly, they're all proportional to a degree. So I'm looking at proportionality and making an attempt to add some normalcy and to add some justification as how we're assigning staff. So we did take a good look at that position. So again, an elimination of one, they're suggesting another one and a half. With the number of elementary schools we do have, it does become problematic, and to, staffing can sometimes be a little more challenging in the smaller buildings.
Well, the savings just put more and more and more and more.
They absolutely, they absolutely have. The expectations keep coming, and there's no relief. And so that, the federal mandates for the IEP meetings and then the state mandates around evaluation are unforgiving. A veteran, a teacher that has been teaching in Carrattuck for 10 years would fall under what's called a standard evaluation. They would have to have three formal observations plus a final summative evaluation during the course of the year. And as a, and I take the evaluation system very seriously, I think it's a great way to give feedback and growth opportunities. At the same time, four meetings with a quality teacher is a bit excessive. And so, you know, you could get the same outcome with one in the fall, one in the spring, and then a summative. And so there, but there is not, we don't have that opportunity within the system that the state has us put the work in to have any flexibility. There was some for, it was another cycle called abbreviated, and that was for a veteran teacher, like Ms. Craft or Ms. Rose, if you had been evaluated, you would have only had two for the course of the year, but those numbers keep getting smaller. Like, there's six at Central and eight at Jarvisburg and five at CCMF. So those are the ones, as an administrator, you look at and like, okay, like Mr. Griffin, he would fall into that category. He would get two plus one. I would not need to watch Robert three or four times in his classroom. I would visit his classroom, but I would not have to go through that formal component. Okay. All right. Three, four, and Ms. Doughty touched on this earlier and said I was going to circle back to it. Revitalize the CCS Carrattuck County School strategic plan. I look forward to working with this board and developing a strategic plan. I'm going to propose that we have a board retreat in January to outline our goals, and then we can reconvene with the county commissioners, and we can move our county and our district forward with a solid plan, gathering input from all of our constituents.
That's something that, I don't know how long it's been since there's been a gathering, but there wasn't one the last four years, I know that, so.
Well, we have some great opportunities in Carrattuck right now with... Well, we have some great opportunities in Carrattuck right now with our growth and with our leadership and we're excited to embark on that process. 36, increase the overall transportation efficiency rating by implementing a broader range of schools on staggered belt. I honestly, I feel very comfortable saying, I don't think the auditors, when they gave this recommendation, fully understood the difficulties of the North Carolina transportation system and the vast expanse of our county on making these recommendations. I would much prefer to have some buses and get our schools started on the same time. And that would actually be more efficient for us as a district in terms of professional learning opportunities and so on and so forth. And so we'll continue to...I put it as in process. We'll continue to find ways to make our transportation more efficient. My goal would be to have a presentation for you and for our commissioners at some point to say, here's our needs to make this a better system for our students and for our parents. If we add X amount of buses and have this many more routes, we can spend this much less time on the highway.
Wouldn't that affect our efficiency rating? Didn't we look into that at one time? And, you know, the more we do that, the less money we get from the state for transportation because our efficiency rating goes down.
Yeah, I don't think people...I know I didn't know about that before coming on the board about the efficiency rating and how we lose some of our funding if the bus routes...
Buses aren't full.
Yeah.
If the buses aren't full and there's too many stops, we lose money. And so we need to, and I'm excited to, with Mr. Walls and Transportation Department, how to get a really great, robust picture of exactly how we can be...and I think efficiency can be a misleading word. Deficiency to me isn't sticking 72 kids on a bus and having them ride the bus for two hours and 15 minutes. That...it's efficient for the state. I don't think that's efficient for our county and for our students. And so, but I want to get a more...I want to bring you accurate information and what that can look like and how we can do that better. Increase breakfast and lunch participation rates. I'm going to just say COVID-19 right now. It's all free. So that's kind of a...we're going to call that in process. Angela Rodriguez has done a nice job of attempting to get our breakfast and lunch participation rates up in a traditional environment. We did implement the full price meal near the federal reimbursement rate. That was done. We'll improve the collection process of delinquent meal fees. That is in process. That is...it may sound easy to go get that money, but unfortunately, the collection agency would prefer to grab most of the money and not return the vast majority to the building or to our district. Reduce the number of portables valued at more than $10,000 not being used as classrooms. This has been implemented. The maintenance department has an ongoing process in place to identify fully depreciated modulators and dispose of them accordingly. Since the date of this memo, four have been sold and three have been scrapped. None of those modulars sold for more than $500. They're falling apart. They're old enough. They're falling apart. Implement existing facilities using fee schedules to charge for overhead costs. This is an ongoing, in process. We continue to look and make sure that our facilities...there are charges for our facilities, but at the same time, recognizing the need for our community to use the facilities. And so it's a fine line and we're certainly making progress. Todd Parker and Ms. Jones do a great job of looking at those requests and doing the best to say, to vet them and to create a system so that we can recoup some of our overhead. Develop and maintain a comprehensive district technology plan. This has been implemented. Develop a detailed disaster recovery plan. That is in process. That falls under technology. And 314, I never want to speak for Ben, but establish joint coordinating for both boards. We look forward to doing that. And I think we're certainly well and way making progress. We had a very good meeting as we voted to move forward with the renovation projects at Mayock Elementary and Mayock Middle School. That was a great first step and then we'll continue to work in that direction.
Is that something that maybe we could go on and set for dates over the course of the calendar year, kind of like you've done with the board meetings?
I think we can certainly do that. I'll have a conversation with Ben and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. And you touched on savings that we have had since COVID. Would you like to bring the public up to speed?
Absolutely. This question came up sometime late last spring. How much money have we saved during COVID? And at that point in time, that was kind of a hard figure to capture. And while I went back and looked, and of course, we were excited to find what we found, which was that we had approximate savings of $393,000. Most of the savings came from the area of substitute teachers, school resource officers, and transportation expenditures. That number was arrived at by comparing the normal expenditures from 1819 to the actual expenditures during the course of the year. So we're in the process of doing the same thing for the first nine weeks since we were virtual during that period of time. So we know we had some costs from savings from substitute teachers and busing during that time. I will say that this school year, I've already, and I think Lys knows, I keep a ticker in my head in terms of where some of those cost savings are going. And I repurpose a lot of those dollars back into teaching positions to support the virtual academy or to support buildings that may have a whole large number of students in them so that we can keep those numbers in a very positive light. So I don't expect the savings to be quite as high as they were because of taking those dollars and really pushing them back, straight back into education. Further evidence the savings can be seen by the increase in our fund balance. Not only do we not have to use the original $161,446 that was appropriated from the 1920 budgets, we were actually able to put back $132,859. Although these two totals only equal $294,000, the missing $98,000 or so dollars was due to a decrease in fines and forfeitures. Kevin was excited. McCord was excited to get the schools up and running for those schools owned. So we...so we had a decrease in those fines and forfeitures. We had $17,000 expense in tree debris removal and $29,000 carpet cleaning expenses and other maintenance repairs that were unexpected. And so we did not realize all the cost savings. Some of those went back to unexpected things. Any questions?
No, thank you. Letter K, testing recommendations. Our assistant superintendent, Renee Doughty.
All right. So again, revisiting back to our November board meeting, we had some discussion. Mr. Griffin behind us spoke at the upfront session. We had some discussion in one of our presentations about testing and accountability. And so let me tell you again and remind everybody where we currently are with our current reality. As of right now, as of right now, the state is requiring all students to take EOCs and CTE post-assessment exams in person. So while the state has granted parents the options to choose to have instruction virtually, the state is requiring all students to come in to take exams in person. The State Board is also currently still requiring that those CTE post-assessments and EOC exams count as 20% of a student's final grade, which adds a whole nother layer of concern and issues for staff and for students and for parents to this issue. So that's where we are right now. We will say that this is getting traction and discussion at both the legislative level as well as the press level. I believe Ms. Rose dropped off an article from the News &amp; Observer today in which Wake County is pushing the issue in regards to testing. From the last meeting, we were asked to have conversations with our local state officials. And so Dr. Lutz and myself, as well as a couple of us, board members and county commissioners were present to meet with Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Hannig, in which we addressed these concerns as well with them and asked them to please give some traction at the state level to these discussions. So the State Board of Education is meeting tomorrow and Thursday and on their agenda is rumored to be an item about testing and accountability. So we sit on the edge of our seat awaiting any new information to come out of tomorrow and Thursday's meetings from the State Board of Education. We have been given some leeway to extend our testing window through, again, a waiver, if you will, requesting a special circumstance in which we can test outside of the normal testing window for any student who is not comfortable coming in to test in the fall or any family who doesn't come in to test in the fall, to be able to extend that testing window into the spring or the end of our academic school year, which for us would be May 28th. We will submit that request on behalf of Carrattuck County Schools for both high schools just in the event that we may need to use that option. Both high schools currently are moving forward with planning for in-person exams because our current reality is we are being asked to do so. So they are making their testing plans. We are in the process of holding some meetings with them to help get some information. Again, one of the more pressing issues is transportation. We do have families who would need transportation just to come in and take an exam. We would have to know who those students are to be able to provide that transportation because we are only allowed to have 24 students on a bus to even get them to the testing sites when we are already running school for middle schools and elementary schools. So we have a whole host of things that we need to work through in order just to get them there to take the test. Our staff are working at both high schools to make sure that we have all the safety protocols in place for in-person testing if we are required to go forward with that testing. Our largest test group right now, based off both JPNA, Early College, and Carrattuck County High Schools, testing plan is 13 for one biology EOC. So we are keeping our testing groups at minimal numbers to ensure that we can keep them six foot socially distanced and follow all other safety protocols that are in place under Plan B and the restrictions that we have to follow. So those things are currently happening right now. I think if there's anything else Dr. Lutz wants to add into what we're currently hoping for and sitting on the edge of our seats for with the State Board of Ed, we are anxiously awaiting to see what happens tomorrow and Thursday.
The DPI, Department of Public Instruction, is making a recommendation to the State Board of Ed around testing and the 95% rule on accountability. Because that's a federal requirement, that will take time. It will not be...it will be voted on in January. The one thing, and I'm reading off an email that I received within the last hour. Keep in mind that the rule that assessments count at least 20% of the student's final grade is a state requirement from the General Assembly, not the federal government. And that really is the best relief we can hope for immediately. That'll hold our kids harmless and then we can make a decision at the local level to take the two nine-week periods and combine those for a grade. Right now with 20%, if a student had a 70 in the class both times, they would not pass the course if they did not take the final exam. If they took a zero on that final exam, they would not have enough cumulative points to pass. So there are no promises, but that little tidbit at the end of that would indicate to me that hopefully the State Board is getting some pressure and there'll be some relief for our students.
I feel sure they're getting some pressure.
It snuck up on people.
For the high school, it would still be before they go out for Christmas break.
The high school, yes. Their semester finishes and so the testing would have to occur prior to Christmas break. But we are going to put a waiver in. I keep saying waiver. It's like pandemic that we can...they can extend that period for students. So...
But that wouldn't be for all students. Only students that said they needed it.
Correct.
I, you know, that article in Wake County said that they were contacting their attorney to see if they could get some loopholes and one being that if they took the exam, it would not count unless it would benefit them. So I think we should contact their attorney. Did you contact him already?
I did.
Okay, and?
He said to see what the State Board is going to do.
Okay.
He...based on that email that I also received, I consider that to be favorable news coming in. Again, I think what happened was is people forgot that our early colleges and a few places like Carrattuck and Green County, our semester was ending before Christmas. I think that got lost and I think it snuck up on people.
Yeah.
Looking too far ahead right now is quite dangerous, but that's what occurred.
And Representative Hannig and Senator Steinberg were sympathetic
Yes.
when we met with them. But the General Assembly is not going back in session prior to when we have to test.
But I do believe the State Board can suspend if...I do believe.
So should we have parents, teachers contact their...contact the State Board of Education?
I think that would be a great idea.
And us, okay.
Yeah, that's going back to the topic there, testing recommendations. I guess I was thrown by that because I thought it might have been for a different level. Because bottom line is, we have to do what the state says. We have no, you know, no option other than if they grant us a waiver.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, we can certainly lobby for what we feel like is right.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
And, but like you said, we don't get the final say.
We'd hope to have a recommendation, we tweak this agenda and that the wording is somewhat problematic. We...it is amazing how fast some of this is moving along.
Every day.
And then it just, there it is. Like, oh, we didn't think about this. Again, when our larger counties like Mecklenburg and Wake get involved, that helps us.
Oh, yeah.
So are we hopeful that we'll have some type of guidance by the end of this week?
I am hopeful.
Right, with that state meeting.
We're hopeful, yes.
Because I mean, December is flying by, you know. I'm sure, yeah.
We made the quick decision to close schools. I mean, some decisions came quickly and hopefully some of these other ones. We said we can come back to school pretty quick too. So things that we didn't think could happen fast have happened a little quicker, so.
Hopefully. Perhaps we should contact the governor. He made that decision.
Yes, he did.
To close school.
Well, how do you want to get the word out there for parents and any concerned citizens to call the State Board of Education? I mean, is that something we should push on our...
Email? I think they all have emails.
They do.
There is a website
Yep.
with their contact information.
And our regional representative is very supportive of schools. She's really good. She's an ex-school board member as well and she really, she does a nice job of supporting eastern North Carolina and her name is currently escapes me.
Okay. Can we post that information on our website?
We can do that.
Okay.
We'll have it up tomorrow.
That'd be great. Okay, sounds good. Central Office Staffing Report. Dr. Lutz, you're busy. I'm going to ask you for central office staff.
I am. I made sure there was water here today.
That's right.
Again, I wanted to make sure this information was shared with our board before I presented to the Board of Commissioners. And some of these things needed to be discussed and brought forth and presented. And I really did want to get on the other side of the election races and different things so that nothing...so that we could just kind of have a little further discussion. So as far as central office positions go, do we have that graphic?
It's up.
There it is. So state law requires that you have a Board of Education, a superintendent, and a finance officer. That's it. Those are mandated by law that almost all school districts have an assistant superintendent, a deputy superintendent, or something of a similar nature. All districts have a human resource director. They have to have information technology, IT, a maintenance and facilities director, a transportation director, school nutrition, exceptional children. Federal programs, depending on size of district, falls under, either is a sole job or in, most recently, I took care of federal programs and I still am, and I can't do that forever. Curriculum and instruction, and I've referred to that as our core business several times. And right now, we are lacking in that area. We have student services, which we have gifted McKee Vento, nurses, safety, ELL, students with English as a second language. Many districts have communication directors. We do not. Most districts have a CTE, Core Technical Education Director. Everyone has a PowerScore Student Data Management System and a pre-K director as well. So those are all just functions that districts have. And I would like to define a central office employee as an employee who is a 12-month employee who works and serves the entire district. It touches 10 buildings, touches from one end to the other in some way, shape, or form. We have approximately 550 full-time employees, 10 schools, over 4,200 kids. When COVID ends, that number's going to be up over 4,300. When COVID ends, that number's going to be up over 4,300 most likely. And it takes a lot to run a district. Now, to that end, our state only gives us $526,000 for central office. And that number's been pretty steady for the last 20 years.
So the state does not require all of these positions?
The state does not require those positions, but I struggle to think how we would function if we didn't have a human resources director, IT, maintenance, transportation, school nutrition, EC. So there's a feeling that we can double up on size. When you look at comparable districts, the one area where we are weak, again, is curriculum instruction. We are staffed for the most part appropriately in other areas. I will say that as we grow and continue to grow, when we add our 11th, 12th and 13th building, I do think we'll have to take a look at operations once again and get some extra support there, because that's a tremendous amount of responsibility. So with the state only giving $526,000, that really sticks, puts the onus back on the local school system to pay for any support personnel to help run that district. And so we try to maximize our dollars as best we can to use any federal dollars that we can to pay for employees, but we also do not receive very much in the way of federal dollars. I have overseen the federal programs. None of the federal programs money comes out when I was assistant superintendent to pay for any part of my salary because there isn't enough funding there to justify that when we need to have people in the building and on the ground. And so, and I'm going to, so the idea with the curriculum instruction piece is, is we do need to backfill and you'll see on that sheet that you have and the one up there, there's vacant position for K-12 curriculum. We are going to need to do that. Again, that is our core business, that is exactly what we should be focused on. We do not need a large central office staff, but we certainly need to support our teachers and our administrators. And one way to do that would be to embed curriculum instructional specialists and coaches into the buildings and to the elementary schools to help support our teachers. I'm going to go back to those numbers I shared around IEP meetings and evaluations. And when we're spending all our time meeting different mandates, we're not spending as much time in the area of curriculum and instruction and supporting our teachers who are working directly with our kids. By supporting your teachers with an instructional coach, with the direct support to help with the areas of reading and math and so on, that is when you see the gains that you would like to see. So I'm basically proposing in the near future, not this, not this school year, but filling that and looking into, and again, part of our larger strategic plan, about embedding curricular instructional coaches within our buildings. We've already started to build that infrastructure. Those are 10-month employees, they are not central office employees, and they are experts in their field and they do a great job of supporting teachers. And they can spend that time with teachers to help get, add support and with kids to give those little nudges to take kids from almost reading to reading. They have that ability to do that. And again, that is at, again, not increasing central office, but I did want to give an update on central office and positions. I do believe central office should be lean. We have a very hardworking staff, but at the same time, we have a lot of people doing double duties, not looking for anything more really than filling that position. Renee wears multiple hats, I wear multiple hats, Sandy Reynolds wears multiple hats as the IT director. And we worked through that, but I did want to share that's where we're at. Questions?
The only thing that I would mention is that we had a curriculum and instructional person in each school back when we were one of the top three school districts in the state.
When I was teaching at Moayot and you were, yeah, we had coordinators in each.
When you put the right coaches, I'm calling them coaches, with your teachers, they work as a team, they're not adversarial and they're not seen as punitive. And it's exciting to see what occurs when you align your resources towards student achievement and to see where those goals are. And so again, part of our larger strategic plan, I think that's what we'd like to see. I think we can do much better as a district with our reading. We can do better in our math, we have the ability to do that. We just all be, we need to work together towards a common goal.
So would you say that the amount of money needed to fund these positions is roughly one-third state and two-thirds local?
The vast majority does come from local because we only have $520,000 to work with from the state. Lawrence is a master, as was Laurie, at taking whatever funds we can and teasing one pot of money to another. Any funds that were just remotely liberal, we're always looking at anything that we can do to add and to offset the cost of the local dollar and maximize the local dollar. But the state really puts that burden right back on us as a county. And that really was, not to go too far in a history lesson, but it was somewhat of a national movement and it's not accidental. And so counties like ours, which are tier three, which don't receive much in the grant world and in federal aid, we're particularly pinched when it comes to supporting central services, central offices. And I keep saying central office, but I really want to turn this into central services because we should be there to serve and to support our staff and support our community.
Ms. Craft, what year was that, that every school had instructional coaches? Do you remember?
It had to be, because when I was superintendent, so I can tell you, it was back in, from 99 through 2003.
But I don't think we, all the elementary schools, had assistant principals.
We had both at Moayot.
I don't think we did.
Sandy Reynolds was one of the curriculum specialists at Moayot. And I can't, Sherry Turpin.
You had a superstar team. They were the right people doing the right work at the right time. They were absolutely exceptional. I know Renee was one, Sandy was an instructional coach, Terry Godfrey, Whitney Bisping.
And then they were weeded out.
Yeah.
But because of what reason? Because of small school funding or what happened back?
Well, that, you know, put a burden on the school district, but that happened in 2008, I think, when small schools' funding disappeared. And that was probably four and a half million dollars a year.
Why did we do away with them then?
Right, what happened?
That was during, that was during a different administration and different board. I have no idea why they did away with them.
That's right.
Yeah.
And some, again, and I will be true to these roots as long as I'm serving with this board and our community, is that our core, our core work should be around teaching and learning.
Yeah.
And providing the best quality of education that we can for our kids. And so you align your resources to make that happen.
I mean, I, you know, the economy and.
I know the economy tanked back in 08, 07, 08, so that had to be a big part of it.
Yeah, but it happened before then because I retired in 2010, so like you said, you know.
I think it was 2008 when they did away with it, or we lost the small schools' funding.
I think they were valuable and, you know, in supporting teachers in turn supported the students. But I definitely think, I mean, I know that's not central office, but you know, we all feel the benefit of teacher assistance.
Absolutely.
And they are directly working with the students and.
I think, and to Mrs. Rose's point regarding teacher assistance, they are, can be an invaluable resource. And to me, that's part of our bigger discussion. Where do we want to take our county? Where do we want to take our district? And what does that look like in the end? And teacher assistants that are doing small group instruction around reading and building those skills are absolutely amazing. We are currently, we're nowhere near staffed at the level we could be staffed at. But again, I think when we have a shared vision to bring people, again, say, if we get these dollars, this is what we'll earmark that money for because your secondary group needs those instructional coaches, your grades three, four, five, and your K-10 needs that reading support. And, but again, that's a part of a bigger discussion that we have.
It needs to be the understanding that if we're going to get that extra money, then we need to be using it. It needs to be earmarked for that, it's not going to be able to be used for anything else.
And this support would help us with the accreditation process as well.
It would help us with that, but what I'm thinking.
With meeting the requirements.
Correct.
During COVID and virtual learning, I think we're going to need that reinforcement for our basics.
Yeah, the kids.
And the kids to try to bring them back up to where they need to be. So I'm all for that additional help, you know? So whatever we need to do, I know it comes down to funding, but I love your vision on putting us back on track to make sure that we reach some of these goals.
Again, it's an exciting opportunity. And again, it's aligning your resources to where you want to be. And again, as Ms. Craft stated, you know, earmarking dollars and showing a clear line and making that commitment, we're not going to play. If we all agree that this is where we want to be and we fund those dollars in that direction, that's, that would be exciting for all of us.
Well, thank you. All right, and we have a revised meeting schedule that we need to vote on. Everybody should have that in their packet. As Dr. Lutz stated, our next meeting, January 7th and then the 21st also.
The 21st of January, the 18th, so we're moving these dates for the most part to the third Thursday. The whole board, we all agreed that we can keep our calendars clear and these are going to be our dates. I think that's great for our board, for our public and for our schools. Unfortunately with COVID, we do have to have other dates that just drop in, like the 7th of January and others. And I know Ms. Rose, you will not be in town for that.
I know, I'd already paid plans for the 7th.
So, but some of these are unavoidable with these meetings that we have to hold. But I think if we go about this every, you know, six months, we committed to these six and then after four months, we'll commit to another six. I just want to make sure that our public's available to come to our meetings, their schools are able to attend and it'll keep us on track.
So these are the third Thursday.
With the exception of March and June, and the June meeting. June meeting was pushed back for two reasons. One, it helps with our budget and also I want to get as many people on the consent agenda for hiring as we can.
Well, the end, and that's the end of business too.
Correct.
And closeout?
Yeah, closeout of business. So I make a motion then that we accept the revised meeting schedule.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The date, the schedule is approved. Second reading and adoption of 2020 fall policy updates. We need action on all of those updates. Do I have them?
So I, and I should check with you how to come. I want to maybe go through them briefly.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Okay. I want to start with.
My first thing.
All right, I'm reading your mind, Ms. Rose. Okay. I want to start with, we pulled off the attendance policy. We're going to revisit the attendance policy, it's become a bit of a hot, hot topic. I want to get that cleared up. We need to have some further discussion and we'll bring that back to the board. School safety, this is COVID-related, so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to start with 1510 and go straight through them. If there's any questions, is, school safety is COVID-related, it's required. It just clarifies exactly what we're supposed to be doing, we are following the COVID guidelines. 1740 is student parent grievances. All this really is, is clarifying in a name change from language that we already adopted. Responding to complaints, and this was an updated with changes and we find the list to be helpful with how to respond to those complaints. 1750 grievance procedure for employees adds a statement requiring parties to respect the confidentiality of personnel matters. And so we thought that that was an important piece to add into our policy. It also allows grievances against the superintendent. Prohibition against retaliation, 1760, it was required. Goals and objectives of the educational program, 3000, this refers ironically to Cognia, it changes from advanced ed to Cognia, which we had that discussion earlier. Testing and assessment, we probably had plenty of discussion around that this evening. This refers to changes that the state has made, we are required to make these changes. Graduation requirements is state law, that's required. Extracurricular activities and student organization, we're adopting this because it simplifies the language. It also cleans up some other language, it's required and it renames some different pieces. 44, let's see, attendant, oh, I pulled attendant, sorry. That's why it's not on there. 4600, student fees, we are working on this. There was state law that requires us to post student fees on the website. Visitors to schools, we're already in the process of doing this, this is just codifying or keep putting a policy that we're following the COVID guidelines. And the use of community facilities, it's all COVID language and this is just, some of it's required and some of it's optional, we're going to go ahead and adopt that. 6305 is safety and student transportation service, this is in process, again, COVID related. 7335, employee use of social media, it adds video conferencing.
That is a big policy. And it's, I don't know if everybody realizes about this policy, all of our employees. I guess, I mean, I know teachers don't have time to read the whole policy and book, but we do make them aware of this specifically?
So the policies are pushed out.
Okay.
Then they're told to, so the video conferencing language, and I don't have it, I can pull it up if we want to take a look at it. 7335.
This talks about not just social media, but it talks about communicating with students also through voice, email and text messaging.
And that already was in there.
Okay.
So the only, so we were going to add, because it adds, it says, or text messaging and then or video conferencing platform. So again, so much of this is, if we were to have bad employee behavior through email, through texting, through any other social media, this already covers it. It added the video conferencing piece and the use of video conferencing through platforms such as Zoom, WebEx, Google Meet. And so it just clarified that because we've now opened up that opportunity for those. We always hope that our adults use good judgment when they're interacting with students.
I just wonder if there, you know, somewhere, you know, new teachers come on board, you know, this is a big policy here.
So it absolutely is. In the past, we have, the past two years, Renee and I had actually gone through the policies. We highlighted that one and the importance of it. This year, we put the onus back on the buildings and said, teachers, you are to read these policies and you are to sign off that you read them. And that would be fairly standard practice in our industry.
Okay.
And the last one was leave and we are already, we've already, this is just putting the policy, formalizing it in place, we already do this. Again, it's COVID-related.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That we approve the second reading and adoption of 2020 fall policy updates. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to adopt the policies. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a first, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Information items, our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for January 7th at 5:00 PM, tentatively. Then we have a work session, January 21st, 2021, at the Nap Professional Learning Center, starting at 4:00 PM. Our Board of Education meeting will be January 21st, 2021, here at the historic Currituck County Courthouse at 6:30 PM.
I have one question.
Yes.
I don't know if my microphone's working. There it goes. In regards to that meeting on January 7th, we didn't talk about this when you talked about the high school. Now, I think that you talked with elementary employees and middle school about whether they could come back or not, medical reasons or what have you. Will we go on and start getting in touch with our high school people?
Will we go on and start getting in touch with our high school people?
That process has started.
It has started?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Board members and superintendent comments? I would like to start with Dr. Dobney.
Yes, once again, I'd like to congratulate Dwan and Kelly for reelection and election.
Thank you.
And welcome to the board, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to mention that we met with Bobby Hannigan, State Representative, and Bob Steinberg, State Senator, and it started out, because I've been on this mission for about the last five years, to get a vocational track put back into the curriculum, because now, in our state, we have a one-size-fits-all diploma, and there's no real vocational track, and Bobby Hannigan and Bob Steinberg both got really excited about it, because I asked Bobby, I said, how many legislators come from a trades background like you? And he paused, and he thought, and he thought, he says, I think I'm the only one. So anyway, and that comes from, you know, the state board, so hopefully, we'll get some traction there to get a vocational track put back into the curriculum. And other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I want to, again, thank you for putting your confidence in me and electing me the vice chair, and I'm very excited to work with you, Kelly. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
We had a short time between the last meeting and this meeting, and Thanksgiving came in there, so I did only visit one school, and that was the high school, and I actually walked through the greenhouse, how beautiful it is, and so I also want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peters?
Oh, thank you. Well, I would just like to thank, thank all the citizens of Currituck County for allowing me this opportunity to represent you on the Board of Education. I'm very excited to work with this board and Dr. Lutz and all your faculty. I promise, every decision I will make will be in the best interest of the students because that is truly, you know, my passion. I would like to thank the Currituck County Schools faculty for all their hard work this past year. As you've said many times tonight, I know so many faculty wore many hats doing different things during, you know, when we were closed, and, and I just want to say that I think that was amazing. I'm very happy with all of them, and I just hope that everyone has a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Craft and welcome Kelly to the board. 2020, what a year. Our faculty and staff has gone above and beyond to ensure that the needs of our students have been met, and our elementary folks got the kids back in school, and they're, or gave them the opportunity to be back in school. Not all returned, but I think they're doing a great job. Middle school, they rose to the occasion and welcomed the students back that wanted to come back, and I know our high school faculty and staff will do the same in January. They'll rise to the occasion, too. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thanks faculty and staff for all you do.
Thank you. Dr. Lutz?
Welcome, Kelly. Congratulations again, Dwan. Congratulations, and Karen, congratulations on being Board Chair again. Look forward to another good year.
I do, too. Thank you.
Our student board members, I want to note, will be at our board meeting on January 7. We've already notified. We think it's important to have our high school students' voice at that meeting. Not that we don't, we're just limited on capacity right now, and so we're trying to be very cognizant of what's going on. I wanted to make sure that our community and our boards are where. We started our United Way Fund Drive. We are trying to really make an impact this year in our community, knowing that we can give funds directly back to Currituck Education Foundation, to Currituck Kids, to the YMCA, and so we can earmark dollars, and I just want to encourage our staff, who's done an outstanding job this year, second what Ms. Rose said, I'd like to encourage our staff to give during this season of giving, and we set a goal of $3,000, and we're going to announce some pretty exciting prizes for our staff that all participate and who has the highest amount per capita, per staff, not the size of school, and so on and so forth. Couple other notes, we are moving forward the 10-year facility plan. I'm excited to get that off the ground, and we're moving forward there. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday, and we'll see everyone in 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. I am looking forward to working with everyone again this year as the Board Chair, and I thank you for entrusting me to lead the board. I feel like we're moving in a positive direction, and I'm looking forward to several of the things that Dr. Lutz brought to our attention tonight, and I really, really am looking forward to that. Kelly, congratulations. I look forward to working with you. Thank you. Ms. Craft, congratulations again. I really, really am thankful that you're both on the board. I would like to also thank all of our teachers, staff, our kids, for all of their hard work. I think everybody's doing a good job, doing the best that we can under the circumstances that we're facing right now, and I just thank you. Hopefully, hopefully, 2021 is going to be kind to us, and we're going to have a better year, and everybody will be on the road to better health, and I pray for those that are suffering right now from COVID, and I wish everyone, wish everyone well, and I can't wait for the vaccine to come out to just put us on the road to recovery. And with that being said, I would love to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we will see you in 2021. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.